Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. With our technology needs, we are going to host our caucus first by reviewing our agenda, and then we will move right into our legislative session. So following this review, I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Parker will lead us in roll call this evening. The invocation will be led by Councilman Lawson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Majors. As noted on our agenda for communications this evening, we were supposed to receive a presentation by Ms. Shelley Brooks, who serves as the Director of the Bethesda Mission Women and Children's Shelter on their fortieth anniversary of existence. She isn't here. I'm not sure if she's en route or what's going on. So if she arrives, we will hear from her. Then we will move to courtesy of the floor, followed by approval of minutes. This would be the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on November 28, 2023. Then we will have reports of committee. The sole committee report that will be heard this evening, I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of December 4, 2023. We have one bill for first reading, that's Bill 12 of 2023. We do not have any ordinances for amendment or ordinances for final passage. We will then move to resolutions. Resolution 79 of 2023, we will vote upon. Resolution 81 of 2023, we will vote upon. Resolution 82 of 2023, we will vote upon. Resolution 83 of 2023, I will request a suspension of the rules for discussion of this resolution, and then we will vote upon the resolution as it is time-sensitive. Resolution 84 of 2023, we will also suspend the rules for discussion of this resolution, and then we will vote upon it, as it is also time-sensitive. Resolution 85 of 2023, this will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Next, we have Resolution 86 of 2023, which will move to the Public Safety Committee. Next, we have Resolution 87 of 2023, Resolution 88 of 2023, Resolution 89 of 2023, and Resolution 91 of 2023 will all move to the Administration Committee. And then Resolution 90 of 2023 will move to the Public Works Committee. Okay, sorry. Thank you. Resolution 85 of 2023, I apologize. It will move to the Administration Committee. And then, is there any old business for discussion? Any new business? No? Okay, and then we will adjourn.
Madam President, just note, 91 actually doesn't exist yet. Just for the public's looking for a document that's being introduced, it can't really be introduced if it isn't here yet.
Thank you for the reminder. I forgot it was not hyperlinked. Okay, so the time is eight, or excuse me, 6:20 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
And Ms. Bowers.
Present. Thank you. The invocation will be led by Councilman Lawson. Councilman Lawson?
Thank you, President Bowers. I'd like each of us to take a moment to think of our neighbors here as the temperature starts to wind down and we come to the holiday season. And as we're looking at hearing from the Bethesda Mission, to think of those who are amongst us that are out living in the elements that need shelter and need a place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Majors.
Please rise the fable for the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and endless.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. For communications this evening, we are joined by Ms. Shelley Brooks, who serves as the Director of the Bethesda Mission Women and Children's Shelter. And she is here and will share a presentation on their fortieth year or fortieth anniversary of their existence. If you wouldn't mind joining us? You can have a seat here.
Good evening to all of you, council. It is good to be here in the city of Harrisburg with you. And it is good to be able to stop and share. And thank you for that invocation and time to pause because it is cold outside. And Harrisburg is a small city and there are a lot of people without shelter in the city. I'm thankful that we're not like Los Angeles or San Francisco, but needless to say, we're still here, Harrisburg, and it's still an issue. So it's something that we have to deal with. And thank you for the celebration and the support, the continued support, from our President Danielle Bowser. She has been a wonderful support to the Women and Children's Shelter. She's one of our favorite people that we keep that secret to ourselves. It's like we have her and you all don't. But that's not true. Everyone has access to her. But we thank you and thank you watching her to grow and to do good things for the city of Harrisburg. Bethesda Mission Women's and Children's Shelter celebrated forty years of operation in May of this year, 2023. I've been a part of that organization for thirty-nine of those forty years. It doesn't seem that long, but it has been, and it's been a journey. And I don't want to say wonderful in the sense that there aren't issues, there aren't challenges, there aren't struggles. But it's been a wonderful journey to watch the progress that Bethesda Mission has made and gives back to the city, and to be a part of that. The Bethesda Mission has been open since 1914. And so we try to be a part of the community by taking care of people that are homeless and do our part for the city to try to take care of people that are homeless. The Women's Shelter has been a little different as we've had women and children in place. First of all, when I came, the issue was homelessness. Women were starting to become homeless. The numbers were rising. And then drugs hit our neighborhoods around the eighties, nineties, and crack blew up the families. And women were coming, but their children were not because their drugs had separated them, the behavior of drugs, the violence of drugs. And so we changed our programming from just homelessness to try to meet the need of homelessness and addictions. And so we incorporated a drug and alcohol program, which we still run and has been very successful. It's probably our most successful program where we are helping women to come off of drugs and alcohol. We also then, as time went on, started running into women that were trafficked, human sexual trafficked. We found out that teenagers didn't have as many parents as we thought they were. A lot of children do not have parents. We found that life changes, the drugs are still there, and sometimes they're worse in the case where now Fentanyl kills people. So you don't even get a chance to work on the issues of addiction. You're working on the loss of death and who's left behind, what family members are left behind. So the process continues. And I'm sure you all know this already, a lot of it. But our goal in Harrisburg is to work on change. You don't come to the Women's Shelter to sit down. We aren't a shelter or a flop house. We are a program of change. We want you back into community. We want you to be a good citizen. We want you to pay your bills. We want you to be responsible. We want you to like yourself and realize that each person, that you have a purpose. And that purpose is to find your place, wherever that may be, in Harrisburg or somewhere else. But find that purpose and then contribute to make it all better. Because as we serve one another, we are served. And the more that we can help people to serve, the better off that we will be. So our goal is to find out what we can do to alleviate the trauma and the pain. And we do that every day. And then we give you some opportunities to go find what it is that you want to do, that you're good at. Then we try to find that support to get that person there. And we'll take them from the beginning to the end of where they move out on their own. So our goal is really to work with the city of Harrisburg, to work at getting people where they should be and want to be, and doing that without the violence, without the drugs, without the trauma, without the pain that they brought into the shelter. And we do that every day. So we've celebrated forty years of doing that. And I think that's been a great accomplishment. We went from a building of forty, of twenty women and children, and just recently erected a $4.5 million building that was paid for when we walked in the door by donors, people that gave us grants, people that offered philanthropic gestures. And we have now room for fifty-one women and their children. So we feel like in Harrisburg that we've been doing this for over a hundred years. So we're not perfect, don't ever want to be perfect. But we certainly feel like what we're doing is contributing to the benefit and to the wellness of our city and to the lives that come to us. And we want to continue to do that. We are thankful for the forty years. Council President Wanda Williams came with then, I don't think you were president then, you just were Councilwoman Bowser to our open house. So I would offer the invitation to all of you to please stop by. Call before you come. You'll get a better tour. Someone will actually stop and give the tour. But please stop by for lunch or just to visit or to see what we're doing. We are a part of Harrisburg, the city, and we need you as much as we feel you need us to help make the city of Harrisburg better. So please feel free to do that. But thank you for the celebration. Thank you for the proclamation of recognizing that we have been in the city for forty years. And I'm sort of biased, but I think we do a good job. I really do. I love my job. It's the job. So just thank you. Thank you for your participation and your invitation.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. And as you mentioned, I did present a proclamation at a private event last month, but I'd like to read it just for everybody's hearing and benefit. So please indulge me just for a few minutes. Whereas the Bethesda Women and Children's Mission has offered a safe space for women in need for forty years. And whereas the Bethesda Women and Children's Mission opened on May 6, 1983, the Women's Shelter Building was built in 1902 and formally served as the Pleasantville Elementary School. The building was transformed into a shelter by including forty beds and cribs. Under the leadership of the former Director of Women's Ministries, Kathy Overhustler, twelve women and children were welcomed on the first night the shelter was open. And whereas the opening ceremony of the Bethesda Mission's Women's, Children, and Family Center was held on May 6, 1983, more than eighty-five guests were in attendance, including state and local officials and community volunteers. On August 18, 2022, Bethesda Mission celebrated the opening of the new Women's Shelter. The building is now able to accommodate up to fifty-one women and their children. The building also includes a library, play areas for children, an exercise room, large communal spaces, and a sunroom. And whereas in 2022, twenty-two women were sheltered per night, ninety-two men and women were enrolled in long-term recovery programs. In addition, seventy-five children and teens attended community center programs. And whereas the Bethesda Women and Children's Mission has provided women with transformational life experiences while offering a home, a house built on the tenants of change, healing, and hope. And now, therefore be it resolved, on behalf of Harrisburg City Council, I, Danielle L. Bowers, with great pride and joy, recognize the timeless work and dedication of the Bethesda Women and Children's Mission. Harrisburg City Council recognizes the leadership of the Bethesda Women and Children's Mission for their commitment to the city of Harrisburg by enhancing the lives of the women and children in need for their fortieth anniversary. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And if I could just add one thing. When we left that building, I counted how many women we served in that building. I got tired of counting at ten thousand. I stopped. So ten thousand women have come through the first building. I don't think I'm going to be the second ten thousand, but I know somebody else will. But thank you very much for your invitation.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Ms. Brooks. I had a question. What number could we contact you at about coming to the Bethesda Mission?
And we are, all that information is also on our website at bethesdomission.org.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the work you do.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We will now move to courtesy of the floor. Again, this week, I'm not sure if we have anyone, but we'll still go through the pleasantries. If you could please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have two minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on November 28, 2023. Councilmembers, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Seeing and hearing none, they stand approved. Now we will move to reports of committees. We only have one report this evening. I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session that occurred on December 4, 2023. On Monday, December 4, 2023, the Administration Committee met to discuss three resolutions. Steve Bortner, IT Director, was present on behalf of the Administration to discuss Resolution 79 of 2023 and Resolution 82 of 2023. Resolution 79 of 2023 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Steve Zimmerman to provide access and service of the city's historical mainframe, programming operations, and related services in the Bureau of Information Technology. Mr. Bortner reminded councilmembers that this is a resolution that has been acted upon for a few years. The resolution is to continue the agreement into 2024. There was some thought last year that it may be a lesser amount, but given activities that occurred during 2023, the full amount has been requested. Activities included the mainframe issue, migration to munis off of the mainframe. He shared that Mr. Zimmerman is working on the HR phase right now, followed by the real estate taxes and mercantile, and then the codes enforcement phase. The utility billing phase has not begun yet. In addition to the migration, Mr. Zimmerman also has daily activities and duties that he is responsible for. Councilmembers asked the following questions. How long do we anticipate his services? Mr. Bortner shared that once the city is fully migrated from the mainframe, we will no longer need his assistance. What is our backup plan to Mr. Zimmerman? Mr. Bortner responded that the full migration expertise from the mainframe is needed. But our backup plan is to utilize an IDMS programmer, their business unit resources to get the data off of the mainframe, and we have a vendor who can provide an overview of the devices. Resolution 82 of 2023 is a resolution approving the disposal and destruction of certain technological devices owned by the city of Harrisburg which have exhausted its useful life for city operations or has nominal value, no value, or less value than the disposal cost. Mr. Bortner shared an overview of devices in five categories, including the following items: adding machines, backup tape units, credit card processing hardware, desktop PCs, a docking station, fax machines, a folder and inserer machine, hard drives, keyboards, laptops, a mainframe computer, monitor stands, monitors, network switch, phone rack modules, power supplies, police radio batteries, printers, servers, surveillance system, telephones, a television, and wireless access points. Councilmembers asked the following questions. How will items be disposed of? Anything with a hard drive will be destroyed? The cost, the estimated cost is $350 per hard drive. Otherwise, there is no cost with disposal. Next, we have... Sorry, I mistyped my notes. We have Resolution 81 of 2023, which is the resolution to adopt an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation for the Cumberland-Dolphin-Harrisburg Transit Authority, also known as Capital Area Transit Authority, to extend its term of existence for a period not to exceed fifty years from the date of approval of the amendment and to take all such other actions related thereto as required. Solicitor Grover was present to discuss the resolution and provided some background history of CAT. There are no liabilities and no assets for any of the parties involved. The resolution is more of a technical amendment, and the board must file with the Pennsylvania Department of State. Councilmembers asked the following questions. Following our approval, will that impact their filing with the Department of State? Solicitor Grover explained that the board voted in July to make the request, and both Cumberland and Dolphin counties have already voted on the resolution. At the annual meetings, are they shifting assets over? Or will this be the shell to hold assets? As far as Solicitor Grover knows, they've shifted everything that they can. He's not sure what's left, but pensions are the bigger issue at hand. I encourage my colleagues to support Resolution 79 of 2023, Resolution 81 of 2023, and Resolution 82 of 2023. Resolution 79 and Resolution 82 will continue to move the city's technology forward as the migration from the mainframe continues while getting rid of devices that no longer serve any purpose. Finally, Resolution 81 of 2023 will ensure the existence of a multi-county transportation system. This concludes the report of the Administration Committee. We have one ordinance for first reading, that's Bill 12 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill 12 of 2023. An ordinance amending Part III of Title IX of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, entitled "The Municipal Waste Recycling and Composting Code", to adjust fees on the collection and disposal of residential municipal solid waste and further provide for a technical amendment regarding the imposition of interest charges on certain obligations owed the city.
Thank you. And I did not note this during our caucus, but Bill 12 of 2023 will move to the Public Works Committee. We do not have any ordinances for amendment or ordinances for final passage. We will move to resolutions. Our first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution 79 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 79 of 2023. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Steve Zimmerman to provide access and service to the city's historical mainframe programming operations and related services in the Bureau of Information Technology.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 79 of 2023? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution 79 of 2023 passes unanimously with six yays, zero nays, and one absence.
Thank you. The next resolution for consideration is Resolution 81 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 81 of 2023. A resolution to adopt an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation for the Cumberland-Dolphin-Harrisburg Transit Authority, aka Capital Area Transit Authority, to extend its term of existence for a period not to exceed fifty years from the date of approval of the amendment and to take all such other actions related thereto as required.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 81 of 2023? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Major, I'm sorry, Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution 81 passes unanimously with a vote of six yays, zero nays, and one absence.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 82 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 82 of 2023. A resolution approving the disposal and destruction of certain technological devices owned by the city of Harrisburg which have exhausted its useful life for city operations or has nominal value, no value, or less value than the disposal costs.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 82 of 2023? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution eighty-two of two thousand and twenty-three passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including one absence.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution eighty-three of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution eighty-three of two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to convey twenty-three nineteen North Sixth Street to the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority to effectuate a sale or other disposition in furtherance of redevelopment of the area into an affordable housing complex known as J M B Gardens.
Thank you. Council members, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I see Mr. Davis is here on behalf of the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you for inviting me, Madam President and other council members. Uh, you may recall that LaShawn McCoy, the McCoy Brothers, along with Vice Capital, has planned a number of affordable housing projects in the city. This is the one that's up at North Sixth and Emerald Streets. And you also recently, I think, passed the land development plan for this, this new development that delivers forty-one units of uh of apartments, four apartments, but also has community space and off-street parking and related improvements. We own a total of twenty-four of the twenty-five parcels that are all um contiguous right there. And it happens at some point in time, I guess. I, I believe what happened was the city conveyed a large number of addresses to the Redevelopment Authority many, many years ago. When we went to look for this particular deed, it still said it was a deed to the city of Harrisburg. So in order for us to finalize the sale over to J M B Gardens, that's the entity they established as new for just this project, um, we've aligned things up so that we can transfer it to the Redevelopment Authority to be included in our other twenty-four parcels. So in, in total, they'll get twenty-five. Along with that, uh, we're, we are required to include what they call redevelopment contract that memorializes what they've promised to build. And it also memorializes the timeframe of when they start construction and when they expect to end construction. And uh, we're told that within a month, they believe they'll start construction, at least they'll mobilize, and they plan to close by the end of this week. And hence, the uh, the ask today just for uh council to take action so that we could proceed and meet, meet that closing deadline of, you know, this, this Friday at the, at the latest. Um, that's a snapshot. Any particular questions or comments? I'm happy to address them.
Thank you very much. I guess I just have one question before I open the floor to my colleagues in Exhibit A um on the first page. So. Is this clear that uh it says that the grantor, for and in consideration of the sum of one dollar lawful money of the United States of America unto it well and truly paid by the said grantee at or before the ceiling and delivery hereof. The receipt whereof is hereby acknowledged, has granted, bargained, and sold, released, and confirmed, and by these pre- uh presents, does grant, bargain, and sell, release, and confirm unto the said grantee. Is that dollar fee being assessed? Is that, is that accurate, or is this just a form?
It's pro forma boilerplate language when you're doing a transaction.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I thought I'd allow the attorney to answer.
No, thank you.
In, in our parlance, it's uh, it's the amount that we need to have some uh, there needs to be an amount, no matter what the transaction is at the county. So if I'm deeding my land over to my son or my, you know, a family member, it's always a dollar if I want to, uh, you know, in order to record the transaction. It needs to be somewhat, they call it some consideration.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Just wanted to note if that was clear or not. I'll now open the floor to my colleagues um to determine if they have any questions for you. I'll begin with our Building and Housing Community Chair, uh, Councilman Majors. Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, I guess the only outstanding question outside of uh, for, well, outstanding question for me is uh, again, again, in Exhibit A, uh, it notes um on I guess, being the same premises in which it looks like there was a, the writners uh were there, and the deed was originally recorded in nineteen seventy-four and granted and conveyed unto the city Harrisburg. Do we know when it was conveyed to the city, or?
That's saying in nineteen seventy-four.
Seventy-four, okay, so everything else, there aren't any other issues that we would have with any other owner?
This came up to us at a very last minute. The city did not own, know it still had ownership of it on the books. Um, it, and that's not the first time that's happened. But um, so we have relied on the title work done by others at the moment, which is uh, and frankly, the city doesn't want it on its books because no one's paid taxes on it since nineteen seventy-four. Um, and uh, we would prefer not to someone to start asking that it should have been taxed because it wasn't put to public use in all that time.
Right.
Uh, so it was a pure, purely administrative error at some early point in time when it was conveyed to Redevelopment Authority. Historically, what's happened is when the city acquires land, particularly because of blight or other things, within one calendar year of that, we typically had a board that voted to transfer these over to H R A. And then the transaction happened for the very purpose of avoiding the part, the land becoming taxable if there was no immediate use for it.
Okay. All right, and then there are no other issues with any of the parcels that would need to be consolidated for that project?
Not at six fifty-two on Monday night this week, but there's a closing coming.
Great, great answer, understood. So, all right, understood. I thank you, no further questions, President Bowers.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, I don't have any questions on this.
Thank you. Councilman Lawson, any questions?
Thank you, no, no questions on this one.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Oh, thank you, President Bowers. My question was too just about the, the dollar amount, but I do understand it. I was just making sure I was reading it right. Yeah, but I, I get that. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. So before us, we have Resolution eighty-three of two thousand and twenty-three. I'll ask Mr. Parker to read it for us one more time before we cast our vote.
Certainly. Resolution eighty-three of two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to convey twenty-three nineteen North Sixth Street to the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority to effectuate a sale or other disposition in furtherance of redevelopment of the area into an affordable housing complex known as J M B Gardens.
Thank you. Are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution eighty-three of two thousand and twenty-three? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution eighty-three of two thousand and twenty-three passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays with one absence.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution eighty-four of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-four of two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution approving the sixth proposed twenty-twenty-three operations-related budget reallocation.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion on this resolution as well.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. McCutcheon will be presenting this evening.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, also President, uh, Vice President Green. Um, city council members, I, I really appreciate you being accommodating and allowing uh the review for, this is the uh sixth proposed budget reallocation adjustment for two thousand and twenty-three. Also want to thank Neil and his team for uh their work and relative to the involved legislation supporting this request. It's always appreciated. This time of the year is always challenging when it comes to looking at our budget and the consideration of anything unforeseen that might be heading our way as we get closer and closer to the end of uh another year. And to start, and I think you have seen what's up on the screen. And are we in, I guess we are in full screen?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, the numbers are kinda, they're kinda tight. They're, they're a little bit difficult to see there. Um, thank, thank you, Tim. It's just one schedule, and I'll, I'll start at the bottom first for Neighborhood Services. It's the, the lesser of the two. And we had a conversation a few weeks ago with the Public Works Director. He mentioned his concern about our, our tonnage disposal expenditure line in the Neighborhood Services Fund. And with, we, we do know now what are the final bills for this year from, from Lancaster County Solid Waste Management, Lakswama. And this is just a cleanup item to get that line out of, out of the potential negative. And it's based on pulling budget, unused budget for personnel for the year. So that will accommodate that cleanup uh in that expenditure line for disposal. And that's the Neighborhood Services Fund. And then uh, which is, it's described there in footnote B. Footnote A goes to the top part, the main part of the schedule, which is all general fund. And this is truly just a reallocation of budget among expense accounts. Uh, and it involves primarily um our medical expenditure claims for the year. And we did recently do a reallocation back in uh late October, early November, I believe, to increase our medical line. We were hoping that it would, we, we had seen the worst of the, the, the claims coming through. But in, as we moved through November, the city experienced, again, some heavier claims than, than expected. The first six months of this year, our medical claims, which includes um Capital Blue for medical, Benicard for prescription, and United Concordia for dental, they tended to average around one million dollars every month for the first six months. But for these, the, the second half of this year, the, 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 the claim expenditure amounts have increased unfortunately, where they're now, they, 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 they've been anywhere from one point three to at times one point five million uh for, for each one on a monthly basis. And November was actually the highest. It was one point five six million. And there, there were some, particularly on the, the Capital Blue uh provider, the, the medical lines. So with that, we don't want to be caught short. I, I, again, looking at this as we're coming down the pike at the end of the year, we don't know, we have three weeks to go with, with these claims. And of course, you know, being, you, you want to be optimistic and think we're, we're through the, those instances where we have a, say, a weekly claim of like five hundred thousand dollars for, for Capital Blue. But there's no way to know that uh and, and to be totally, I want to be totally protective of, of what's, what we have in budget. So given that, we've, we've estimated what we think will cover us certainly for the remainder of these final three weeks on the medical side. And the other item to consider, the other major item is the recently approved arbitration award for fire, which involves some retro compensation, some longevity pay. And that's factored into this schedule along, along with taking a look at the overtime line for fire. So we want to clean up the, the, the O T line for fire, but then also uh with this final payroll that's coming up, the, the first payroll of this month has already taken into the effect of the arbitration award, as will, of course, the, the, the next payroll. But the retro pay is significant. It's the better part of two hundred thousand dollars. So we're working that in uh to these lines, again, to be, you know, ensuring there's enough budget to accommodate and uh keeping the public safety uh nature here. We also looked at police uh for extra duty. That has grown uh significantly, so we want to clean up that line as well uh by adding some additional budget there. So to increase these lines, the, we, you, you get to that point where you know what you want, you know what you're facing, it's like, well, where do we go to reallocate? So again, we took a look at uh projected unused budget amounts. Most of the source to, to fund these increases come from other personnel salaries and wages lines, as you can see up on, on, on the uh, the, the presentation there. But also being mindful, you know, taking enough, taking some, but leaving enough to accommodate the final payroll of this year. So that was the approach, using projection and a good look at what, what's already occurred through the December seventh payroll. There's a couple of lines in here that are non-personnel to help with the funding, uh, where we, uh, I talked to uh our I T manager, Director Steve Portner about the, the line and, and that budget unit, and uh also confirmed with the Office of uh Support and Taxation, Mike Hughes, to confirm that it was okay to utilize budget there. And also had a conversation with Dan, Dan Hartman, about his budget unit. Uh, the consulting line, he's not going to be uh utilizing that. So that's, again, there's the full reallocation, taking away from those lines and funding up what we see is necessary uh before the year is over this year. Any, any comments or, or questions on, on the two funds there?
Thank you. I'll begin with our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green. Any questions?
Um, I really don't have many questions. I guess just, just kind of looking at it, it looks like a couple of the, the budget lines have went into the negative, such as it looks like police overs on our police extra duty. Um, when that happens, how exactly does it work as far as like paying them? Like, it still pays without a problem, it just goes into accounting?
Right. And, and, and yes, the, the negative appears. Uh, we don't ignore them, but we operate within the, the, the confines of the budget ordinance, which, if you think about it, it's in a, a grouping, personnel, services, supplies, and, and other. So as we move throughout the year, uh, we're looking at, I'm, I'm constantly looking at it on a check run basis. Every time we, we process a check run, I want to make sure that the grouping is, is positive. We can have negatives that surface within lines, but as long as the other lines can temporarily absorb that negative so that the overall major group or major object stays positive, we're in compliance with the budget ordinance. But the idea is to say we, we, we see this and, and to point this out to the rest of the finance team that what, what you're referring to, we need to get uh down into the details about what's creating the negative and, and to address them before they come, uh, before it becomes a crisis or, or a critical occurrence.
Thank you, that's the only question I have at the moment.
All right.
Thank you. Councilman Lawson, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Just, just one quick question, and there's a, a, a big drop in filing fees. Was there a particular reason?
Uh, Mike, I, I talked to Mike Hughes about that, and at the beginning of the year, there was more of an anticipation of cost on that. But uh, he did refer to that. He didn't give me the detail as to why he felt like he wouldn't need that full budget amount. But I, I can, I can follow up and, and run that by Mike.
But, but mostly, I'm just, we're at the end of the year, so we, we know what we're going. But mostly, I'm just, we're at the end of the year, so we know what we're going to be dealing with. So, that's...
Right. He's not, he's not expecting like a huge onslaught of expense that we have to pay, you know, with our next check run. He's comfortable with this shift.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Just the way that they work, the filing fees are for court. But before they go to court, people get a letter or something, and there's more than one letter. And the hope is that they actually respond and come in and make a payment plan or satisfy the obligation. So, they anticipate how many claims they're going to be pursuing, and they have to have filing fees to do them if people don't pay. So, it's more of an expectation of what they would need, you know, if people don't respond. But a lot of times, when we write to people, people come in and they make, they make a payment, they make an agreement, you know, somehow to work through the problem that's the delinquent tax.
Thank you. That's, that answers my question fully. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, President Bauer. And good evening to you all. Thank you for being here and explaining this to council and to our residents. I just had two quick questions. One, so you were saying that you were taking from, I know you said from taxation for filing fees, and then it was the business administrator, right? It was those two spots where, is that where the negatives are right there?
Right, really, the negatives are in, mainly in the police extra duty line currently, which is a little further up.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I saw those. I mean...
And, and fire, the fire overtime line is strongly negative.
I shouldn't say negative. I'm sorry. I mean, like, the blank spots there. I was, sorry. But I understand where you were taking. You see where it says consulting sixty thousand, and then there...
There's nothing there.
Yes, that's what that just is a, a little negative. Sorry.
Oh, yeah. There's a couple of lines that just have not had any expenditure or...
Right, that's what that is saying.
...encumbrance activity for the year, correct?
That's why you're able to take from those spots. Okay.
Right. And, and again, with further discussion, we confirmed from the department lead person or director that they would not be needing any more of that budget for this year.
Okay. Thank you. I needed, I just wanted to clarify that. And then, my other question was, how are we thinking about this with the medical part for this year's budget? Like, what did you do differently to try to anticipate that for this year?
Right. It's been, it has been proposed. This budget right now for twenty-three, based on this proposed request, would take our budget up, as you can see, up to, you know, thirteen point seven million. But I do believe that the budget we've proposed for next year is lower than that. Not that I'm at, any of us are a predictor of, you know, healthcare claims. The one thing that I didn't, that made me think of something. I'm glad you mentioned that, too. Our stop-loss revenue, which is related to when the city has these heavier-than-expected claims, it is, it's also increased. As of right now, the city just received a payment last week, and our stop-loss revenue is up over nine hundred thousand dollars. Perspective on that, it's never been that high, looking back over ten, eleven years. We had one year where it was approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand, and that mainly was due to a significant injury with police. But, but these claims, again, they tend not to be, and we budget that way. We don't budget in the high, high six figures for stop-loss. So, it's, it begs that same review when it comes to the expense side, and also how we're budgeting for stop-loss revenue for next year.
Okay. Thank you for further explaining that for clarification. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
No. Question I had is answered, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions?
Thank you. With respect to the Neighborhood Services, you mentioned, you know, Director West having some concerns about our disposal. Is that reflective of collections in the city, or are any of the other agreements we have with Lakswama, or just in terms of how much we budget it? Because I know we have our, you know, the put or pay for all the trash.
Right. I mean, this, this leads me to a tendency that we're, you know, the tonnage is up this year. And I think that, well, too, you know, the authority increased the tipping fee rate for this year, as they are doing for next year as well, which has worked into next year's budget. As you know, too, we have the other, the other three boroughs where they're, they're okay in terms of, they are also similar, where their tonnage is up. And there are small shortfalls that can be cured with budget transfers that are not, they're not material in terms of what we're looking at. This is just the city. This is not including...
Including, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I guess that's also part of the reason why we're, we have a Bill Twelve. That'll be up for discussion as well. On, okay, on our, for our budget, in terms of where we're looking at for the increase in police extra duty, are we, and my apologies for not being here for the budget meeting last week, are we looking to increase the overtime for next year, or was the extra duty just an anomaly that we're just trying to reconcile for this year in terms of increasing the amount of money that we budget for police overtime?
So, extra duty is not overtime? Extra duty is the assignment paid for by a third party? So...
So, all that's going to be reimbursed, then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then, we base that number that we budget on what we anticipate coming in? And do we anticipate that number going up for next year? Again, I just...
Yeah. And, and it's, and what Attorney Grover just said about the, and there's a revenue side, a revenue component side to this. So, it involves, you know, considering both the expense side and the revenue side. It does seem that extra duty has been consistent in the last two or three years, where it's, I want to say around the one million to one point one million in expenditure. And of course, that's, you know, similar to revenue. There's always a timing difference. They don't, they'll never, on the cash basis, they'll never equate, right? But they, they should be, again, given what we've seen in the last couple of years, to take that forward with the budget for both the revenue and expense sides of this, of this item.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I can't quote you what we have in the budget for, for extra duty.
All right.
At the moment.
No problem. Thank you. That's it. Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Are there any other questions related to Resolution eighty-four, two thousand and twenty-three? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, we have before us Resolution eighty-four of two thousand and twenty-three. I'll ask Mr. Parker to read it one more time before casting our votes.
Yes. Resolution eighty-four of twenty-twenty-three. A resolution approving the sixth proposed twenty-twenty-three operations-related budget reallocation.
Thank you. Are there any, again, final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution eighty-four of two thousand and twenty-three? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-four of twenty-twenty-three passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including one absence.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution eighty-five of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution eighty-five of twenty-twenty-three. A resolution ratifying the submission of a Pennsylvania local share assessment grant application of up to one million dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to fund renovations of the Martin Luther King Junior City Government Center at ten North Second Street, Harrisburg, PA, one seven one zero one.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-five of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution eighty-six of twenty-twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a domestic animal protective services agreement with the Humane Society of Harrisburg Area to provide services to the city of Harrisburg's animal control program.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Public Safety Committee. Next, Resolution eighty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-seven of twenty-twenty-three. A resolution appointing Mr. Ernst Baltimore Junior to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution eighty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-eight of twenty-twenty-three. A resolution appointing Ms. Catherine Scott to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution eighty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution, Resolution eighty-nine of twenty-twenty-three. A resolution appointing Ms. Rafika Mohammed to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution ninety of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution ninety of twenty-twenty-three. A resolution to enter into a master services agreement with Barton and Lou Gudice, DPC, for engineering, technical assistance, and consulting services for various projects supporting the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Resolution ninety of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Public Works Committee. The final resolution this evening is Resolution ninety-one of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution ninety-one of twenty-twenty-three. A resolution appointing Ms. Pamela Parsons to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Thank you. Resolution ninety-one of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. We've noted pending receipt of Ms. Parsons' resume.
Well, literally...
Or in the resolution.
Or the absolute resolution, yes.
There you go. Is there any old business, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business?
So, may I inquire about the rest of the week, if I may? I just looked on Ecos. I don't see tomorrow's agenda having any of the resolutions on it now, which would be too late to hear them for tomorrow, because it had to be up twenty-four hours before the meeting started. And I'm not sure what that does to the rest of the agendas and the rest of the meetings.
Okay. The agendas for tomorrow and Wednesday, well, the revised agendas, I should say, were pending Vice President Green's approval. So, she has just approved them? So, would we be okay with Wednesdays?
Wednesdays.
Okay. But not tomorrow?
Because it's got to be up twenty-four hours until the Sunday night.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
I just got them at this meeting.
Right. She just received them. No further...
I just discussed them with Jared at four ten in the...
Right.
Yes.
So, there we are. So, Wednesday, we're fine to move forward with the, so what we were doing, we were adding the agenda items for a work session during the budget hearings. So, we're fine to move forward with Wednesdays, but tomorrow's, we'll have to reconfigure those.
So, tomorrow will just be budget?
Yes.
The budget hearings? Okay.
Yes.
And then, anything else would just move to potentially Wednesdays?
Would you move them all to Wednesday? I mean, that's a...
I guess that...
That would make sense. I don't think we have another choice.
Or you have to schedule a meeting with very little notice. Yes.
Exactly. So, yes, we will move everything to Wednesday. Hopefully, we can get through everything pretty expeditiously. Any new business, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the time is seven twenty PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.